Call the Monday, June 5th Planning Commission meeting to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we thank you all for attending. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 17th meeting. They were all emailed to you and you also have a copy today. Unless there's any corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Andrew?
Okay, motion on the floor to approve the April 17th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Dick?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Motion carried, minutes approved.
Okay, at the last meeting, we had tabled an item, so at this point in time, if you would like, I will entertain a motion to remove the item from the table for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Andrew, call roll, please.
Dick, do you second?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Okay, the item is back off the table for discussion. I'll turn it over to Andrew at this point in time to lead the meeting for us.
All right, well, I'm gonna turn it over to John. He had some more information he wanted to share with us, so.
Glad to be back here today, everyone. So last time, we had discussions from myself as well as a counterpart regarding SBA Towers. Couple of things I want to talk about first. You know, we showed the propagation maps from our proposed site showing the improved coverage into the interior of Bryan, Ohio with the new site so that it's closer to the center of town. It provides more coverage, in-building coverage, to the interior of the city as well as to the northwest and northeast areas of the city. I had our RF engineer from AT&amp;T, John Kovach, who cannot be here today, but he has designed essentially every site in the northern half of the state of Ohio for the last 25 years. And so he concurs with his assessment of this map as opposed to the map presented by SBA Towers mainly because AT&amp;T, as well as all the major carriers, Verizon, T-Mobile, and Dish Wireless, they all use panel directional antennas. And so I think we talked about it last time, each cell site is designed on a triangle. And so each point is where antennas are made, and it's called sectors. So every AT&amp;T site as well as Verizon, they all use panel directional antennas. The propagation maps supplied by SBA clearly state that they utilize omni antennas. So omni antennas are essentially, if you can imagine, this is a panel antenna. They're this big, this wide. A omni antenna is basically a fishing pole. And as I pulled in here today, on top of the roof of the Williams Counties at the administrative office next door.
It's their east annex. Yeah, they have a nine room one center.
Right, well, if you look on top, those little things sticking up, those are omni antennas. And so they provide coverage in a circular area, you know, for, you know, police fire to make calls, you know, response to emergencies. Whereas panel directional antennas are specifically aimed at certain areas, much bigger, provide more services, provide better 5G coverage. So the antennas that they propagated, that they utilized, were not utilized by not only AT&amp;T, but no other carriers in the United States of America for 5G coverage as well as any new sites they construct. So that's one thing I'd like to bring up. Second thing, I know we had issues with the two variances we're asking for, and I like to go through the criteria that Andy had provided. One is the setback from residential. We have to be two times the height of the tower from residential zoning district. So currently, we are 62 feet short, which is a 17% variance, give or take. And then the other issue was your code required that every tower need to be a half mile from one another. As we talked, one of your board members had asked if that's something that's a little obsolete. It is because under the new technology of 5G coverage, provides incredible services, speeds, all that, but it doesn't go as far as anymore as the old 4G and 3G coverage. So, but we have to deal with that because that's what's in your code. And so that variance, if we're 1,450 feet from the existing tower, then that's a 40% variance that we're requesting. And I can go through these criteria that is in your code to go over both of them at the same time, essentially they're the same in terms of the rationale. The first code requirement for an area variance, whether special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land or structure involved and which are not applicable generally to other lands or structures in the same zoning district. So as we talked, the tower that we're constructing is not only for AT&amp;T, but also for CSX Railroad, for their positive train control antennas, which stop a runaway train when necessary, train-to-train communications, as well as having a moving train contact somebody on the ground. So they're trying to upgrade their systems throughout the country. And unfortunately, well, for other tower owners around the country, CSX only puts their antennas on their property because they have to ensure that, you know, not now, but 25 years from now, 30 years from now, any of their safety measures have to be in place because all the towers that we're talking about for SBA Tower, not only theirs, but all the other towers that are located on non-CSX property, they're all leased property that could expire at some point in the future. So CSX isn't willing to risk the ramifications of having a site go down or at least expire when they know that the tower's on their property. So that would be my response, number or letter A. Letter B, whether the properties in question will yield a reasonable return or whether they can be any beneficial use of the property without the variance. We can't assert that one. Obviously, it's a railroad, it's a property that could be utilized for any purpose in an industrial district. But the area variance criteria are not simply they must all be achieved, just a majority. And so that's one that unfortunately we cannot obtain. C, whether the variance is substantial and is the minimum necessary to make possible the reasonable use of the land or structures. So in this particular case, this, per your code, the compound has to be designed for multiple carriers, not only just AT&amp;T and CSX, but all the other carriers in the industry, so Dish Wireless, Verizon, T-Mobile. And that size compound can only be located on this parcel as opposed to imagine the tracks would be over the right-of-way. Everybody knows railroad tracks and there's little section of land on each side of the tracks. Well, in this particular case, because of the code requirements, we can't make a 10-foot wide by 100-foot long compound, just wouldn't be feasible. So I believe we have achieved the minimum necessary. In terms of substantial, as I mentioned, a variance for the first one is 17%. I feel that's minimal. And regarding the 40% variance for the half-mile setback, as we talked earlier in the first meeting, that half-mile requirement, although it's in your code, is simply obsolete in today's day and nature of having wireless coverage in the 5G realm. Let's see. D, whether the essential character of the neighborhood will be substantially altered or whether adjoining properties would suffer the substantial detriment as a result of the variance. We're an industrial parcel, industrial district. We sent out, Andy had sent out notices to everybody within 250 feet. Nobody had actually, from last meeting, had objected to the tower. In fact, one of the business owners next door called me to want to know if we could use their equipment, AT&amp;T could use their equipment on the tower. And in addition, since we're 320-some feet away from the residential district to the west, I don't believe anybody has called the city regarding their objections to the tower. So we're an industrial use, a commercial use.
Correct. I have not received any calls, so.
So we're an industrial use, commercial use within industrial zoning district. So essentially, the character of the neighborhood, the character of this area, wouldn't be altered. E, whether the variance would adversely affect the delivery of governmental services, water, sewage, trash pickup. We're an unmanned facility. We don't use any of those things. Whether the property owner purchased the property, knowledge of the zoning restrictions. Railroad's been there for over 100 years, so there's no way they could have anticipated the technology we have here today. Whether special conditions or circumstances exist as a result of the actions of the owner. There aren't any that I can think of that would, or special conditions that the owner has created, CSX Railroad. Whether the owner's property is predicament, feasibly can be abated through some other method than the variance. Unfortunately, your code requires those two area setbacks and the property just simply isn't wide enough to get farther away from the residential district to the west. And because of that half-mile requirement, the property isn't more than a quarter mile longer for us to achieve that. I, whether the spirit behind the zoning requirement would be observed of substantial justice done by granting a variance. This tower's not only made for AT&amp;T, but also CSX. AT&amp;T desires to improve their coverage within the city of Bryan. We've demonstrated that by our propagation maps. In addition, CSX is trying to improve their radio communications for their service, for their train operations. And we are located in an industrial district, which is where towers, under your code, are permitted to be utilized if we achieve those variances. Whether the granting of the variance requested will confirm on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this regulation to other land structures building in the same district. CSX is the only railroad in this area of the city and in this zoning district, so there wouldn't be another land railroad that would be harmed by granting the variance that we're asking today. So by my calculations, the only one we didn't achieve, in my opinion, would be B, the reasonable return on the property if the variance is granted. That's really all I have. Since there were no questions from the last meeting, I didn't know if you had any questions or I could address them at this time.
Have you entered into some serious negotiations with SBA on upgrading their antennas on the existing tower?
I relayed those documents to AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T stands by the affidavit that was submitted that I sent to the city as Mark attested to an affidavit in this one in any court, United States of America, for its veracity. In addition, the documents that SBA submitted were simply a letter from them. AT&amp;T is adamant that they have achieved, they have attempted, and numerous times, to negotiate with SBA for a cheaper rent to make it more economically feasible for all their services, and AT&amp;T stands by their affidavit.
He acted like he was willing to do about anything when he was in here last time.
AT&amp;T, I can't speak for the mindset behind AT&amp;T, but there are thousands of sites in the United States going on right now that are just like this. I would say that it's past, SBA still has not relented on their. I can't speak for them, I'll just say that there has been no agreement, let's put it that way. Wish I could have better information for you, but this affidavit, AT&amp;T standing by.
Now, with regards to the half-mile distance.
Yeah, sure.
You know, you said it's, the half-mile thing is kind of obsolete.
It is.
So I think our code was based on, not necessarily the, like, the functionality of the tower, but having too many towers close to each other. So it's more of a visual aesthetic, I think, with the city rather than, so I guess your definition obsolete and mine, are might be two different avenues.
Understood, understood. I was just referring to the coverage aspects.
Correct. And is there other, I mean, the railroad property actually runs north, there's a rail site that goes north, and then there's actually a railway that runs east and west. Is there another location on the railroad property that that could be done?
Well, we looked at that, but unfortunately, because the code requires that we have to have capability to have three other co-locators on the tower, I believe that's correct, it's not wide enough to put in the railroad right-of-way. So what CSX is telling me, there isn't an actual parcel that they have that's another half a mile to the north from this tower that they could locate this facility. Everything is tracks and narrow, and that's what it's related to me.
Like the old trim trans building.
Big Y.
Yeah. I mean, I know that parcel's, at least their right-of-way's pretty large up there.
Sometimes they also lease this property out, meaning that other entities lease it for their own, like, uses of, I had some sites where lumberyard utilized, old yard, that kind of thing, and so they couldn't, didn't have the rights to that property anymore. I can't speak to the specifics in this case, but.
Correct. I'm just thinking their rail service here, they have two, also by Spangler Candy, just knowing the city.
And I don't know how far that is, whatever, but I know that AT&amp;T and CSX looked at a lot of different options here.
That CSX or Norfolk Southern?
CSX is in this case, right.
No, we don't have CSX in the community.
Norfolk Southern.
Oh, I'm sorry, Norfolk Southern. I do, I do struggle with these and they, I can mix it up.
Have you received any letter of support from Norfolk Southern?
Well, I have a lease agreement here, I can submit to you. They have used the property, I gave this to Mark, to the directors, or to Andy, for this parcel. So they have agreed to move forward with it. So that could, that'd be a letter of support, I guess you could be asking for.
So you have a current lease right now? And how long is that?
Yeah, right there.
Have, it's been executed?
Yes, that's the actual copy. I took out the financial terms, I redacted that, but the entire agreement's there for you.
How long is the term of that lease?
I believe it's typically 25 years, and they have the option to renew. But that's the standard, and that's pretty much the standard for the industry. All the tower owners utilize a 25- or 30-year lease.
What other towns the size of Bryan have two towers?
Oh, gosh, well, let's see, I'm doing sites right now, with the sites I'm working on right now, let's see, Wapakoneta, that we just finished a site there, exact same situation. So I think Wapakoneta is very similar to the size of Bryan, I don't know, but it's very, very similar downtown. I'm doing a site, I did a site in Van Wert for exact same situation, tower and the railroad versus the SBA tower there, so that's two instances. And actually, those two towers are closer together than this one, meaning that the one in Van Wert's 500 feet away, and then the one in Wapakoneta, maybe similar to this. It might be 1,400 feet or 1,000 feet. And the Van Wert tower's constructed, Wapakoneta site, we already have the building permit, and we're just finalizing some internal stuff to start construction. And that site's 250 feet tall, whereas this is 190.
But how close to residential buildings?
Wapakoneta, 200 feet. But all the residential buildings are in the industrial district. And in, for the Van Wert tower, across the street, 500 feet.
Okay. Utilities or fire, do you have anything, you, any comments or questions? Al, sure, you want to step up here? So we can hear your voice.
They want you at the podium, sir. It's our rule up here. It's our miking system.
First time, first-time caller.
Yeah, I just had a question, I don't know if it's concerned, but with the railroad in the state, or not the state permit, but the railroad permit, providing power, is that something that you've seen in the past? Are we subject to a railroad permit if we're gonna be railroad?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not versed on the actual operations of the railroad side of things. We will get a building permit if we're approved today from the city of Bryan, or the county if you don't have your own building permit, I think you do.
Maybe through the state.
Yeah, the state, I'm sorry, yeah, but yeah, I don't, we don't handle the railroad operations for that kind of.
But they did give us a lease, so they basically said we're good to go, okay, if it, yeah. I just like to say if we do have to pay for it, and then we have to pass some fees on to somebody.
Right.
And, or extend, make them extend their service out to where, I don't know, property.
Correct.
That's all, only thing I'd like to say.
Right, the railroad work permit's a little more difficult to work with, and.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Mark, you have anything you'd like to add for us?
Where would that be fed from? Al, would that be fed from parish streets?
I don't have any addition on any other questions or anything. I have some thoughts that I'll share with you folks later, but.
Okay. Okay.
Could we take a little bit of a recess, though, since this lease, so we all have the opportunity to look in the conference room?
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think you need a motion since, again, since this, since you are not a quasi, since you're not a legislative body, you're a quasi-judicial body. What I have explained to Andy and the mayor and Brian is that you have the right to go take a recess, to confer with me or amongst yourselves. You can't make any decision in private, but we can certainly talk about any of the legal issues or questions you may have. So that would be my recommendation, that we go ahead and do that at this point, if you're comfortable with that.
I got another question there. Why there and why not north of town?
North of town. The area they're trying to cover is basically the center of Bryan, because they probably have a site that's north of the city. Yes, they do, so I'm not familiar with the geography of the area. Just this, one of the propagation maps here.
Okay, that one?
Yeah, there you go. So whatever this is, this is major X, comes through, is it 15 or? Yep. So you look to see the north, there you have an existing site there. So this site covers basically Bryan. That site up there covers outside Bryan, where the township is that's north, always up to the highway probably. This site covers the city of Bryan, that's what this is. So let me get, your propagation site, red is obviously going to be your best covered. Okay, so you're gonna be, and that's where you're proposing it to go, right there. This is the new location, correct, yes. The other one would be, you know, existing locations here maybe. Well, this red up here, it's not there. And do you have an, the old? Oh, yeah, there you go. There's the old. There you go. So you can see, see the area between the two reds? Yeah. When you go back, that's all red, Matt, and it's also orange. The orange where, this is the best average orange, and then this is 300. The difference between the two, I wish you could have them side by side. Well, I have, I have this actual hand.
Yeah, there's a small streak of yellow.
Yeah, it's not, I mean.
And versus the one above.
Here it is. So I guess everybody to the south, it's getting less, you know, worse coverage is no big deal.
So current, oh, yeah, current site, current site, so all this here, our site, new site.
Yeah, a little sliver of yellow.
See, now, yellow is poor, green is next to nothing, and so you can see now, at least I can move it a quarter mile north, it is, basically linking the two, the two.
I don't have my reading glasses on, but.
And this is covered for AT&amp;T, is what you're saying. Correct, correct, but also two, remember, 5G coverage is what they're.
Little streaky yellow versus yellow.
So Verizon uses different frequencies, but the same technology, and so this tower would be an asset for them because they would be closer to the center of Bryan. And if you notice, I guarantee you that if you, you know this area better than I do, you live here, you go north on Route 15, I guarantee you there's no tower in between the city of Bryan and that one.
Very minimal.
Right.
What about, like, other communities? I mean, Fort Wayne, bigger cities where they have smaller towers down on, like, white poles? I mean, is anybody, look at.
Those type, those type are called small cells, and those applications are utilized, believe it or not, they're gonna cover 500 feet each direction. That's it. So therefore, imagine if you are downtown Cleveland, let's say, or Toledo, and you got sites on top of buildings, and because of the other buildings in between, the signal's blocked on the ground. And so then they put in a little pole, a little small cell, and that covers the street, that covers people walking by, that covers the office, people that are having lunch, you know, cars driving by. And so that's where small cells, small cells aren't made to cover a huge area, they're for specific, for specific infill and offloading of, you know, very small areas. You'll see it around, I guarantee you, the Toledo Mudhead Stadium, you'll see them around there, because when everybody's there, the site lights up.
Right.
And just like at Aggressive Field downtown Cleveland, there's ones all right, all around the stadium there. And there's sites, you can see, there's antenna sites, existing buildings, for all the carriers, but they need to have that one small cell to cover people walking into the, to take account. So, so you're telling me you want to move closer to the north cell tower? To link up. To link up. And they should be within, the last time I were here, you talked about us maybe changing the code to get within a quarter mile. Correct, correct, so by a quarter mile north there, there's not gonna be. It seems like you're gonna get further away from your other towers, though, you're not gonna be within a quarter mile. That's what's gonna happen, I mean, so there's gonna, I guarantee there's gonna be a very public, for a site here, you can come over there, and you can see where the gaps are. If you have AT&amp;T, you drive through those areas, you drop off. You know, you know where you guys live, but this is legit coverage, and you see now, all these, because of 5G, these coverage are starting to show. And unfortunately, that's the technology. I guarantee that site there, the reason why that's so big, and this red's because maybe they're at 250 feet or 300 feet. So it goes a little further, but we didn't want to propose a 250-foot or 300-foot tower.
If they're gonna want to come in, maybe, and fill some of those gaps in the future, though, I mean, maybe propose a higher tower, maybe you could get the same area you're trying to catch now.
Perhaps, but that's what it is right now, and, you know, this is coming from the guy who designs every site in AT&amp;T for 25 years.
It could also be in the fly zone area for the airport, though. So that would restrict height in a lot of areas of the city.
So does the railroad have a deficiency right now in their communications, or what's the purpose of the railroad?
They're under a mandate from all, from the FCC, the federal government, to approve their communications. They're building these towers to augment what they have. I don't know where they're at in this area, but when these towers go up, you can see in the lease script, they have a right to co-locate, and if you look in the plans, there's areas for them to co-locate their equipment, and on the tower, too, there's two spots.
Do you know how far they can transmit?
I don't, I don't.
Okay. I mean, I know if we're gonna have towers every five miles.
Oh, no, 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 I can't see that, you know, but like, imagine the with antennas or the omni antennas that they have, oh, that's all they're installing, it's like a general radius, not trying to aim it somewhere.
Right.
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
I don't know if they would tell me anyway.
That's fine.
So let me understand correctly, so you're saying, within a few years, they're gonna probably want to. So you're saying, within a few years, they're going to probably want to go east and west there?
Absolutely. You can see why there's coverage deficiencies. You know, that's farmland out there, and most farmers are going to get contacted to locate the towers. And remember, all the carriers pretty much locate on the same towers, I would assume in this area, so Verizon probably has the same coverage as gas, so does T-Mobile. And so if you're a farmer in those areas, you're, you're going to get called.
Okay, well, we think we want to take a recess and confer with the attorney. Mark, would I need a motion for that, or would I, the chairman just declare a recess?
I think you, as a chairman, you, you can just declare the recess.
Okay. If we're in agreement, I'll, I'll put this meeting in recess for a little bit, and we can go in the mayor's conference room and discuss with the attorney. Thank you.
...that we've had. I guess we have a few items here on the agenda.
Before you go there, I just want to make sure. Do you want that lease agreement to be made part of the record?
I have the permission so long as the financial term is in effect.
I noticed that, so, okay. Okay, I just didn't know. I just want to make sure. And they... I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine. I guess regarding the conditional use approval, the main point of that is being within a half mile of an existing tower.
No, that's the variance.
Oh, that's the variance. Okay.
It's half the distance of the tower between residential properties.
Twice the distance.
Twice.
So, I guess, what do we want to talk about first? Conditional use or the variance?
Half and twice. That's what you're dealing with today.
Yeah, I mean, they're both kind of intermingled here. So, I mean, having a dis... We have a distance close to a residential district. He's asking for a variance on that. And again, I think he said it was a 17... 17 percent variance. He was 62 feet short, and that's based on the height of the tower.
And again, just to be clear, that's... I mean, we're talking the same thing substantively, but that would be a conditional use technically, not a variance. I just wanted to clear on the record, that's all. Not just... Just so somebody listening down the road isn't confused, but it's... You're on the right track, yeah.
Okay. And there was no agreement that could be worked out that you thought before with the other tower, with SBA?
AT&amp;T, I reached out after a meeting, and they said they stand by their affidavit.
And it's strange, because he was on record in here in stating they would do anything that you needed, so...
And I don't know if the conversation's definite, but I relayed, I gave that exact... Those exact documents that were submitted by the SBA attorney to my client, who's under the AT&amp;T.
So, your client is City Switch?
Which was in contract with AT&amp;T.
Yeah. So, a lot of your conversation today actually had to do with Norfolk Southern and the requirements of railroad safety and transmission. But they have not, other than you provided a signed lease that they signed in May, they have not issued an affidavit. They have not said they're not in compliance. They have not. Is that correct?
Well, it's just a... We had, first, we went through the lease period that we had, and then the drawings that was submitted, has bottom tower dependent on how it's used.
Okay.
And so, that's... That's what their use will entail.
Is the tower primarily for AT&amp;T or primarily for the railroad?
It's for both. I... Primarily?
I guess, who kicked the ball off first? You know, what?
Ball off first, let's say. I think they used probably AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T. And they reached out to CSU.
Norfolk Southern Railroad.
Southern.
The railroad.
The railroad. And they said, yeah, we can use that tower for that for rent.
I guess the reason I'm asking is some of our code criteria actually speaks to the owner of the property petitioning this, which the owner of the property is Norfolk Southern.
Correct. And they gave City Switch permission to act on their behalf. It was a... I know they have the right to act on their behalf throughout the country and all the properties.
Okay.
But they were... They're not actually part of the tower, which is why I submitted the application for that.
Okay.
I just know one thing. I mean, I know we haven't heard from anybody that lives in the residential area there, but, you know, these rules and codes are written for a reason. And if it were my parcel of property, I would probably have an issue with a body that isn't actually voted on, you know, just setting up here, making decisions on what happens to my property value. So, I do take issue, I mean, I'm going to have to tell you, with a body like us making a change to something that was put in the code for a reason with the minimum of one half mile. So, for me, it makes it difficult to make a decision like this based upon people who were voted into office making these codes, so...
And that you're referencing was the variance for that, huh?
That's correct, yeah. That's probably my biggest beef. I mean, I don't see enough of improvement in your propagation study that warrants putting in us actually breaking what's in these codes.
I mean, there was a slim line of yellow.
Yeah. I mean, if it were green, you know, maybe we'd be talking a little bit more. But I mean, honestly, it's for us to break something that is actually a code. I just don't think it belongs in my hands, so, you know, that propagation study didn't do anything to warrant putting a tower that close to each other, in my opinion.
Well, I guess, based on that...
I mean, I would definitely, I would probably make a motion to vote no on variance or deny the request of variance based upon 116905C, in my opinion.
Okay, well, I guess we have a motion on the floor to deny the variance.
I'll second it.
No, I'm sorry. I want to make sure we got the correct sections. You mentioned 11...
116905C, and it's where it states any wireless telecommunications tower proposed as a conditional use shall be located in a minimum one half mile from any wireless telecommunications tower proposed or previously approved as a conditional use.
And I would just suggest, then, that you all... The motion also include at least some reference to the criteria set forth in 1189.09C1.
For the variance.
For the variance. I don't think it needs any magic to it. Just make sure that the record reflects that's... If I'm correct, that's the other section that you're considering.
You okay with that, Bob?
Yeah, I make... I make a motion. I mean, I think we also vote no, or actually vote no on the variance request at 11... Due to 118909C1. That satisfy?
And 1169...
And then, of course, that has to do with the variance, right, at 116905C, so...
All right. Mr. Short, you okay with Phil's second? Can you add motion?
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, motion on the floor to deny the variance. Andrew, I don't know if you want to read the motion and then call roll?
Wait, wait.
Oh, sorry.
It's too late to table this again.
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, now with the motion on the floor, that's right. I mean, the only way to get this table, and it's totally your discretion, I'm not saying you have to do it or anything like that, is for the movement to withdraw and the secondor to say, okay. And then somebody can make a motion to table. But again, you don't have to do that. That's procedurally the way to do it, but it's totally within your discretion whether you do that or whether you move forward with a decision on the substance of the issue.
Well, motion and second on the floor, and we are in discussion. Are we allowed to have discussion with the public on that during discussion?
Yes. You know, I made the motion, and I mean, I'm not here to dictate what we do, but I mean, I don't think there's any reason to have another meeting. In my opinion, this belongs in someone else's hands that made these codes, so...
Do you have a comment during discussion? I'll listen.
No, I just, I wanted to confirm with my client, and I cannot right now, about the discussion we had about the motion. Somebody was supposed to be here today. So, that's why I asked for the table.
Okay.
But, again, it's in your hands.
I guess any further discussion, which also would entail a motion to remove their motion. Andrew?
He's still taking notes, sorry.
Yeah, getting all this. Okay, so we got a motion on the floor to deny the variance request based on 1169.05C and 118909C1. Again, an affirmative vote is to deny the request.
Correct. Motion to deny the request.
All right. Um, Bob?
No.
No, if you're voting for your motion.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's confusing. It is. There's a lot going on here.
All right. Jack?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have two other items here, I guess, on the table as well. The conditional use approval. I don't know if we're going to act on them or not act on them. It's up to you guys.
I think at this time, I would present a motion to deny based on the lack of evidence to support under Section 116904B.
For the conditional use approval?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Andrew?
Okay, I got a motion on the floor to deny the conditional use request based on section 1169.04B.
Mayor?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Okay, the third item, we have site development plan review. I guess it's kind of moot at this point in time. I don't know if we should act on it or just have no action. If we voted to deny both.
I don't think it matters.
Just have no action on that item?
Definitely.
Does anybody want to have any action on it?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, do you have anything else for the board? Any upcoming meetings as of now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Yes, we... Next regular scheduled meeting would be July 3rd.
Wow, can't make it.
Being the 4th is the next day, I would recommend that we have that meeting July 10th.
Do you have an item for that agenda?
I believe I will have two items for that agenda, so.
I'm motion... Do we have to do that? Do you want to do that?
No.
I'm fine until July 10th.
If things go the way they're looking, that'll be the case. The general will go out a few days before, and I also get an order by make sure the temp works, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any further items from anyone?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Halli, you can have that one.
That be a second, Mayor?
I will second that.
Motion and second on the floor. Andrew?
All right, motion on the floor to adjourn. Dick?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all.